Still broken.
All standard for the regular meeting for the city of Ellsworth for March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one and under it. In this whole.
All right, our next item, test, test, will be the approval of the agenda, the consent agenda.
This will be approval agenda. This is a new item just added, actually last two times ago when I'll send out my letter. At this point in time, if anybody needs to add anything to the agenda, include the executive sessions, we don't have an executive session on there anymore. So if you wanted anything added, now's the time to add it.
Okay.
And then the council will either approve it as printed or as amended.
Okay. Anybody want to say added?
Mister Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it. All right. President Council Coach has made a motion to approve the agenda as as printed. Counselor Panzer has seconded that motion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, so we wanted the consent agenda, which includes the water and sewer termination or extension requests. Are there any?
There are not.
There are none. Okay.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Jessica's made a motion to approve the consent agenda and Tyler has seconded that motion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Anybody on the petitions and allegations list today?
I think that's probably me.
Right.
Looks like they are.
All right, come on, Mister Hoosier.
Hi, my name's Dale Hoosier. I spent a good part of my early life living and growing up here. And, you know, some of you, not all of you, but I wanted to speak, if I could, a little bit to some information that I've learned recently regarding sources of funds, loans, grants, whatever, that might be available to Ellsworth residents that perhaps you're not aware of, maybe how long it is, but anyway, I had contacted the Kansas Department of Commerce in conjunction with the Northwest, or not Northwest, North Central Kansas Climate Commission about some funds they have available through the Kansas Department of Commerce, which are actually community development block grants from the federal government. And I'd be willing to share those with city staff or whomever might have an interest in follow-up. And I think I've learned in conversation with those agencies that Ellsworth is in the process of becoming or requesting to be involved in the those programs again. I don't know if you have a deadline or a date that you think that might be happening.
We did the initial approval. And there's going to be some community meetings and Del was working on that, so.
It will be in twenty five or?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And when when that's known, you'll make the city aware of what's available, right? Okay. So that that's a source of revenue for folks that might want to do some rehabilitation work for some of the substandard housing in Ellsworth, which I'm part of. The second source of funding, which is available for those same types of properties, is through the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, specifically their rural development. And there are funds available for those who qualify for low to moderate income loans, loans up to a maximum of forty thousand and an additional ten thousand dollar grant is available for those projects. The requirement there is that you have to be residing in the property. And there are other things. And once again, if there's any desire by people that you're working with or whatever, I'd be willing to work with those people on that process. I've talked with several of the city staff over the course of the last year on my property specifically. And one, not concerned, but an issue that I want to try to resolve is I was working with the previous administrator, Dustin, and we were working under the premise of a memorandum of understanding, which is now lax. And so what I I don't know is what we're going to do to either extend that or whatever. And I'd like some definition, not tonight, but sometime about what's available. And so I guess what I'm doing is saying I can be a resource for finding funding for those types of properties. I don't know exactly how many houses in Ellsworth fit. I'm going to guess there's perhaps more than we think. I'm going to guess it's probably in the teens or maybe in the low twenties. So you're probably aware of what you have or don't have within the community, so. Tonight, for me, was just an attempt to come in and introduce myself and and see where we are and what I can do to help. And then I intend to continue working with the city staff while bringing my property up to code. So any other questions?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Good to have you here. Big place this on agenda and future meetings and until my time get get through this, this structure. And that was the city council said declared as unsafe dangerous structure last year. And there was a side agreement made, and I'm not a fan of those things because everything should come through the council after the council made it a motion to move ahead. So we'll revisit here in the near future, and of course, he'll be notified.
All right, moving on then. Okay, that's the only one we have tonight. Next item is unfinished business. This is Resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen amending the three hundred Kingsley condemnation. Now, you want to? Del, you have a character.
The resolution, just what you guys discussed last time about the hundred and twenty five feet, no, hundred and twenty five feet not being condemned. So this is just correcting the first one. That's all it's doing. So they can operate there. There are gym up there.
Well, I think just to clarify, so I've been public knows when this, when the old hospital property was unsafe dangerous structure. If this is the whole two blocks, which included this one building, and even though the resolution itself only said a building. And definitely it's not, and of course, City Attorney and I both agree that we probably have a real battle because it's not, you know. So this actually kind of corrects everything.
Yeah, they they, when they did the survey, that allowed us to parcel them out. It was because the old hospital never had a subdivision, just with one whole block that was the hospital. This clarifies that some of the city can be, they're going forward.
So if so, Patrick, like the hospital, say it would collapse and it would fall onto. What what happens with that? Do they, I mean, if she's got interns, do they have, does that cover or would the city be liable for a building that we didn't do something with?
I don't think we're not knocking it down.
Okay.
All right, Mister Mayor, I propose, make a motion, I move to adopt Resolution two zero two five dash one seven.
Second.
Counselor Bernard has made a motion to approve Resolution two zero two five dash one seven. Counselor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any debate, any concerns? All right, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto new business, the city of Ellsworth Spring Cleaning Week.
Mister Mayor, council members, Spring Cleanup Week is coming up in April, first part of May. I've been working with Troy on that and 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 I will talk. Last year, the city spent, a lot of, as I mentioned, I know, a lot of cities have cleanup days yet, but none of them take tires. Or they do take tires, there is a charge because there's a charge to get rid of them. In the packet, I put a copy of the bill from last year was twenty four hundred, two thousand four hundred ninety dollars the city's spent on tires. And of course, these people would take their tires, any car dealership, retired dealership and have them disposed, pay the fee, of course. And of course, I I think we all wonder how many of those tires actually came from within the city. Because they were kind of bad, and I mean, we've seen it happen. So we're proposing to you during cleanup week to take tires, but have a five dollar charge and then have to prepay at the office. So we don't want to, we don't want the guys taking money in there. I mean, I don't want them taking cash. You have no accountability, so.
So they just show their receipt when they go?
They come here and say, I'm going to bring six tires, and I'm there, you show six tires, and it clears through.
Yeah, makes sense. Well, I move to set a fee of five dollars per tire disposed during the spring cleaning week from April twenty third, May third, and require payment.
Hey, the only thing I I called around on, like everybody does tires, and the the five isn't isn't bad, but do we shop around the company that comes and gets? Because I talked, I talked to Rangker, and he had a different company, get all them ones up to chutes, and he he looked at that price sheet, and he kind of thought maybe that was a little high. Because, see, he was getting rid of about a ton, or these guys are getting rid of them by a certain tire.
Troy's not here, but Troy.
We've done it both ways, and I did it, and the price is usually.
About the same?
Yeah, I mean, within a couple hundred dollars.
So, okay, well, now what if they bring up a semi tire? Are you only going to hit them for five bucks?
We didn't get that many. We had, last year, we basically.
Well, you were talking car truck, yeah.
Well, last year, we had four hundred, four hundred and ten tires at four dollars, a hundred at seven, and then four different ones each at thirty each.
Yeah.
And my thought was is if if we're going to start doing this, it's a whole lot simpler to say five bucks a tire. And we don't take tractor tires, so we'll catch those and we'll learn what we're doing wrong this year.
Yeah.
And move on to next year because what we don't want to do is, okay, they won't come to the office and say, Mandy, I want to bring three tires, but what size? I don't know. And like, no, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
I think we want to try to recruit some of the city's money, but let's be practical about it as well.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
I mean, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
I mean, five, I guess if you're going to go, because the whole town is four. Everybody's four for any kind of a car pickup tire. You know, we're going five, but he also told me, like, a light truck tire shouldn't be seven bucks, it ought to be four. Because they don't differentiate, but that's just how they're doing, how that company's doing. Well, that's all I was asking.
At first, we tried to take them to a tire dealer.
Well, COHOP, you could, I called them, you could take them, and they'll they'll do it for three seventy five, not on the roof. You can drop them off there too, so.
Or they said it takes them to the landfill.
I don't, I never got ahold of the county.
They don't take them to landfill. You know, they may, they'll take them because, of course, ours go to a landfill after here.
Yeah, but the county takes tires.
Yeah.
They charge you. I don't have much.
Right. Then that's what I meant. I was just curious, yeah, how much they charge.
Yeah, I don't know. I never.
I don't need to know.
But I would say if they're going to hit us for seven on some and four for others, five's probably not a bad.
To try.
Yeah.
See how it goes. Yeah. That's all I have.
Yeah, that's my motion. Okay, so you're going to approve the Spring Cleaning Week, five dollars a tire. Who is second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, so Counselor Panzer has made a motion to approve the cost of the tires and for the city of Ellsworth Spring Cleaning Week. And Counselor Bernard has seconded that motion. Any other debate, discussion? All right, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on, ordinance three one seven zero, the annexed airport tracks rezoning.
All right, we annexed in the tracks, the airport annex, minutes are one, but the airport is agriculture AL. That's all this is, is to give it to the proper zoning.
Great. Pretty simple.
Yeah.
And the the planning commission, okay, they'll all have.
All right, Mister Mayor, I move to approve ordinance three one seven zero.
I'll second that. All right, Counselor Bernard has made a motion to approve ordinance three one seven zero. And Counselor Panzer has seconded that motion. Any debate, discussion, concerns? All right, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, next item, water and sewer rate discussion.
Can I get the front line?
Yes.
As I've mentioned for previous meetings this year, that we have to take a hard look at it. I mean, for a couple of reasons. One, I think our rates are behind where they should be. Rates have not been adjusted since twenty nineteen. You did have a rate study done in twenty twenty two, twenty three, somewhere's in there, and no action was taken at that time. I looked at this afternoon, like, the sewer rates that that time would have yielded for an average family would be about ten to fifteen dollars a month more back then. And but we now have a problem with lack of funds, plus you're now staring at this sewer project that's going to be eight to ten million dollars, but that was low forgiveness we got. So take a look at this whole thing. So let me break this down in a couple of different parts. First of all, this city is only the second city I've ever been to that has the water and wastewater, water, water funds, sewer funds in the same fund. Justice City did when I got there, they don't anymore. They said it didn't happen. And there's a lot of reasons to split them apart because, one, I think users are different to some extent. And of course, I've been in some cities where I had some major sewer users, maybe major water users, they made that whole be the same, maybe a major water user over here. Let's say a concrete plant that has a separate meter for their concrete. So they're a big water user, but they're not a sewer user, or, you know, and then of course, you had something the other way as well, but, you know. And so it's always good to split them out into it. But also, when K D C, you do revolving loan funds for both water and wastewater, they're separate offices. I mean, they're not handled the same, the requirements are totally different. So I think if we look down the road to maybe apply this, I believe that there's more forgiveness possibly out there yet. But to do that, you're going to have to get rates up because your rates are too low. And then secondly, I think to show better financials. So that's what I talked about with Angela, and and we would not do this till the twenty twenty six budget, so we're not going to do it tonight, not going to do anything tonight, we're just going to start discussion. But but probably look forward to splitting those up next year. We believe that the city went that, went to one fund back in the early two thousands, maybe two thousand four, five, I don't know who's administrator then. Maybe Jonathan Days or Scott, Scott the first time, but it's combined, there's nothing wrong with it. Except I think it's pure to have them separate, so you operate your funds and and manage them as two separate enterprises. The other thing we found that, and I really thought that was happening, is looking at the sewer rates here, because I think your water rates here are pretty decent, the sewer rates are probably extremely low. And so I looked at what you've been doing. Last year, we took in a million six into into one fund. Breaking it down, you have about a million dollars went to water, and about six hundred thousand went to sewer, give or take a few days. Well, the expenses last year in sewer were that were five seventy. Plus then we also have transfers to our reserve funds, plus a hundred thousand dollars comes out of water and sewer to the general fund for, you know, because some of the work that Mandy does is is utility related. And so it should be, you know, same way. So we are going to split them out, but all right, that's just my plan, basically. And again, we think that the sewer has not been carried away, so it's way behind. And the other thing I think you have to look at, so let's just talk water now. You know, this city, like some cities do, it's getting less all the time. You know, that that base fee includes two thousand gallons of water. Well, when I started city government thirty five years ago, everybody did that. Most of them were getting away from that. And because even when I was in electric city, when I first started fighting Oakley, we had a base charge which included products. Nowadays, take a look at your electric bills, no electric companies can get any product. Because the fee that, and I'll pick on your company, since they serve for, you have a base fee with no product figured for you now. You have that because you want the ability to walk into a room anytime you want, turn the switch on, lights go on. Well, for lights being able to go on, now, use your company as an example, they have to have infrastructure in place. They have to have wires leaving this building, they have to have transformers, they got to have a science, they got to have contracts to biodelectricity, they got to have management, they got to have people that'll fix line when it goes down. They have to have all those, and that has to be built in because they have to have a crew, and so we have to have a water crew to be ready to go whenever. I mean, you know, even though, you know, if if there's no, if we have, we don't have a water line break this year, we still have to have a crew available because the next one could be next two minutes from now. We don't know that. And and so that's why there's certain costs in there. And so I always believe, and a lot of cities are moving in that direction. And so that's one possibility. Right now, you get two, two thousand gallons. And we sell water by the thousand gallons. Some cities sell about a hundred gallons, again, we just moved the decimal point. And I agree with you, some like the hundred, because that way you don't have to, you don't have to roll over us all. Because right now, if you're metering this for twenty nine hundred gallons, you're billed for two, two thousand gallons this month, but then next month, you'll you'll have three or four, yeah, you know, four units. So it's whatever. And yes, there's still a few cities out there that sell about a cubic feet. Thank God we don't. It's still, you figure it out, and then you have to sit down and figure that there's eight point four eight gallons in a cubic, in a cubic foot, so thank God we'll pass that stage and not have cubic feet meters. So one option, of course, to look at now is to, maybe not the first year, but but start. Maybe instead of two thousand gallons in that first piece, do a thousand gallons. And then the following year, two years from now, go do zero gallons, so build into it. Carl Brown, the the rate study that we've looked at, he was going to make one jump once. That's too big. That would double some of our people's bills, you know. And I think we have to take a hard look at it because we need to, there may be some move in the in the fee for water that could go south a little bit, not north, go south, but I don't know that yet. The other thing we do here with water is the fact that our base fee is based on the meter size, as you saw the chart there. Some cities do, some cities don't, and that adds up for discussion. So I think that's things to look at. On the wastewater side, like I said, we're way behind. And again, we have the two thousand gallons for water use because based on water use. And I believe we do use for residential use the winter average of three months. And a lot of people say, why, why do you do the three winter months? Well, it's because most of your water is contained inside the house. You're not watering your cucumbers anywhere, which you might do, you know. Or watering a lawn a little bit, you don't have a private well, or or when kids playing with the hose out in the yard, you know. So most cities, in fact, I don't know many that don't, water, water, sewer is based on the winter, winter three water. Sammy, favorite March, of course, you can always argue, and some people say, well, this was a bad year because we had to drip our faucets because it was cold. Well, that don't happen very often. I mean, you never get the perfect three months, but, you know, I think it's a way to do it. And of course, commercials based on what? We do have, I found here, some DDUCK meters, which we have to take a look at on some of the commercials, that it's worked, not being used for the ability goes out there. Those are interesting. We have to take a look at that in two. But, you know, bottom line is, we just got to, you know, when you take a look at that eight million dollars, this is about eight million dollars. To service that loan, it's going to take four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. You only took in six hundred last year. So just, and then that's probably too low for now. So just do the math, you know, you got to take a look at that. Hate to say it, but that's what it's going to be. It's going to be four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years. You know, basically, eight million divided by by twenty, a little bit of interest on there, and I didn't advertise it out, but it's probably pretty close. And then other costs you're going to have as well there. So it's going to be, so you've got to have options. One, we could study this more and come back next time with some more, more recommendations, because one, we can start doing something now. Or if you want, you can just say, don't do nothing for three years, and then some city commissioner, they, when some city council, when they have to make that first payment in twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, it's going to have to triple or quadruple the rates. That's not good. That's not good.
Need to start.
Yeah.
Go now.
Well, you need to start low.
My opinion.
I'm afraid that sewer, you're probably going to be looking at twenty, twenty five to forty percent increase. I mean, that seems like a lot. But it may be that, again, I want to massage some numbers a little bit. The other thing that kicked in place last week, and I may know it in both accounts reported in my letter on Friday, is last fall, the city council approved a five hundred fifty thousand dollar contract with BG for the preliminary engineering work for a little bit. When you get the grant or you get the revolving loan fund, you'll pay for that. But you don't have to revolve a loan fund yet. So our order, if we don't pay for it, if we don't the cash basis law means when you make a motion to spend money, you have to have the money. And if you don't have that loan yet, you have to have money that you reimburse back into it. Well, we don't have five hundred, I think in my letter, we have two hundred and some thousand dollars in in the fund right now. And then we had about seven hundred thousand dollars, yeah, in the two reserve funds. So we have to encumber, so for our twenty twenty four audit, she's taken out basically two seventy five because she has two reserve funds. So that means we only have a hundred fifty thousand dollars, maybe two hundred thousand dollars maybe in reserve. If I look at the water side right now, we have two wells that probably need to be reworked. And I'm guessing at least a half million to more per well. You have to re, reset them, redo them the whole bit. You don't have the money. You know, I know there was talk last year, I'm told, buying some generators, generators for the water plant and a couple of the wells. You can't do that. I mean, we simply can't do that because you locked, by making that motion last fall. Not saying it was a bad motion because you had to get started on it, but you didn't have to reserve it in place. You know, frankly, I think for, you know, between the water and wastewater together or separately, you need to have reserve funds and that million and a half or two million dollar range tied up together. And you're half of that, maybe. And we just got to, it's just part of the operation of the business. You know, nobody likes raised rates. I don't like a raised either, but I know what you got to do. And of course, I came from a situation, essentially, where their building, base two of their wastewater is eighty five million. Now, I realize it's ten times bigger, so it's about the same percent, it really is. I've been amazed, as I tell the office downstairs, how, you know, how do I adjust, because I started in a small city, but I also ended up in a larger city. All I got to do is divide everything by ten, and I'm pretty close. So if I spent ten million there, I spent a million here, I spent a thousand there, I spent a hundred dollars there, it's just, it's pretty, pretty close.
Before I forget, what is the approximate length of time that gap you're talking about before we get the loan proceeds that we're having to float that?
Probably a year plus.
So it's a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we we got to keep moving on, we are, we are moving. If you read that, I did put in your packet, the K D A G permit for this year, came in this year, and it is a timetable of how fast we got to do things. I don't go to the page thirty two of the of the agenda report. And basically it says here, K D C, we have to have plans, specifications K D C for review by December thirty, if wanted this year. We have to have a construction of frozen brumas begin, begin by next July, July one of the twenty twenty six, and then by September thirtieth of twenty twenty seven. Now, there may be a little leeway to come into that, but we got to, we like to keep moving. And again, so so with K D C revolving loan funds, they said, let's say we got here for ten million dollars. Okay? And then we need a million of it today. That million will start drawing interest, not a ten million. And so then, two weeks, ten months later, we need another billion. That starts growing, you know, paying interest on it. And then at the very end, usually, you don't start making your payments, so the price is all done, and we know it came in at nine million, two hundred forty two thousand, three hundred twelve dollars. And then you base your loan on that, and so you make your payment the year after. Problem is, you accrue some interest, but of course, interest rates are a little lower than those, so that's the only really way to do it, unless you use some temp notes, and that doesn't make any sense, this actually works pretty well. So it's it's a way to do it and get there. But like I said, you know, there is going to be a a kind of a meeting day when when this is going to have, the rates have to go up. But I think also, we have to realize that you are behind now. So I planned to bring it next week, just want to get the discussion started tonight. Some thoughts and ideas of how we can move there. And I realized, anytime you make grades, you know, it's interesting. Plus, you also got to remember, when you shift rates, do you shift them to residential or do you shift them to large business? And and you got to be careful because, yeah, you want, you know, and I and I I worry about, trust me, I worry about the single people. Elderly people that are on, you know, low, low incomes, social security only, I worry, I understand that. But you also, you can't run it all to the business side because they have to make profit as well. And you also want to be known, you know, be known in the area as being anti-business. So you have to find that neat, neat, you know, neat spot in there. You know, everybody complains about water bill, you should realize water bill includes, in our case, you pay the city for water, sewage. You pay for trash, that, of course, we contract that. You have a three dollar, about a three dollar store water fee. And then, of course, you have the pool, and everyone always blames water. I mean, it's, nobody ever pays a sewer bill, they pay a water bill. I mean, that's just the thing that every town is. If you work in a city that has electric, you never get a water bill, it's your electric bill. And if you have a city that has both electric and natural gas, like it did in Neotus, say, in the winter time, you pay a natural gas, summer time, you pay electric bill. It's the same service every month. It's just the way people are. They'll call one of the neighbors in their town and says, what was your electric bill? Way people are, they'll call one of the neighbors in their town and says, what was your electric bill? So they call the independents, they're on average, you know, says, mine was so much higher. Well, yours included water too. And trash and everything else. So we just got to teach the public that. But it's again, we have to start moving that direction. Uh, we're gonna at least get to start tonight. Uh, I'm doing some comparisons to other cities. I don't like to compare with other cities, but I do like to compare. Because nobody is else. Because one, we may be low, they may be, we may have to go higher because they went higher before we did, they got ahead of the game. We don't know that. They may have problem, we may have a problem that they don't have. And what you're finding here is this. Pounds that have lagoons. Always have this belief that lagoons are cheaper than plants.
Hmm.
You pump it out there, it's it. So it takes care of itself. It's not true, you're not buying as many chemicals and everything else. And then, of course, now you have a change in standards where once you release, you have a release and we're doing, you gotta not release it anymore. And those costs go up and. The same difference, Chaplin went through here recently, they, they had a plant that went bad and you give them to build a plant in Chaplin because they're in floodway. And so they went to lagoons. And, and they thought the lagoons would be cheap and it wasn't. Um, and they, 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 they went about three miles out. In fact, as we had talked to them about sending their sewage to Jackson City. And that actually made some sense, but. They decided after all the lagoons, they wouldn't be independent, which is great, it's not gonna be cheap either. So. That's where we are. I think we should scratch, move forward, bring more next time. Uh, the rate study that Carl did, I'm not a big fan of Carl Brown, who refused to make, he does good work, but just, you know. We have some things that are fees that I don't understand. Like on water, for example, the guy I think I mentioned in my letter meeting is that. So. As a residential, I pay a base fee and then I pay so much a thousand gallons thereafter. But on our largest users, they get the first seven hundred thousand gallons for. Basically three bucks less a hundred, a thousand gallons than we do. And I quite don't understand that a little bit. I wanna massage through that. And now, you know, when we can't slam it all at once because, again, how's that affect the business side and those accounts? And you gotta be real careful. So it's, it's, it's when you push. Remember, I said one time, for every action, there's opposite reaction. So when we do this, can we stand this? And what's that gonna do to you? And what's the place gonna be? And how's that gonna affect the crew and business and everything else? So you have to find, maybe find a little more, you know, this way where the reactions aren't as bad.
So is a percentage across the board the fairest way to do it? Or do you have a better way of doing it?
I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a combination of both. One, I wanna relaunch the rates because, and I, I pull up different cities and they all do it a little different. And I looked at the kind of cities around here in Beloit. Oh, I'm trying to, oh, I'm trying to, Lisbon, um. Sterling, I couldn't get lines, but they did wrestle and look at what they kinda do a little bit. And, and, and everybody bases their charges, you, you know, we have a base charge on our water based on the size of the meter, see on there. Well, I don't know where a city that does that, and I'm not sure if that's a good idea or not. And then you've got our wastewater is based on some meter size, which I can't buy that at all because. I can get the meter size on water because that's infrastructure I had to build in. But sewer. You know, they all dumped in that eighty inch or six inch or eighty inch, go with this line, whatever you have in the, out of the street or alley. They dump into that, so it's not an extra infrastructure per se. So I think we just wanna look at that and I'll play some different scenarios and, you know, work it out. Forcing out new life, that kind of stuff. So it's kinda fun to play with. I hate to raise rates, but, but you still got the bills. And like I said, you can wait a year, two or three and. And I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be here by the end. But that's not the way you do business, make a city work good. Any questions, you know, email, email, or drop me, anybody, call me and. If you have anything that you're thinking of, but we can kinda work through it. Well, this might be an agenda. I would like to have this address done by. Early May. You know, there's somebody that's talking about some order, maybe bring an ordinance in May, because I think people need to know about. You know, and it's, it's a move and anything, make a move and, uh. You know, that's Barry Fitch bought a famous, uh, Donald's, okay, stay just safe every, every time there's a shift, there's a shifter and a shift heat. And, uh, you gotta, you gotta listen to him.
You do? Very good. Anything else now?
That's all.
Okay, anybody have anything else on that? Hey, very good. Uh, something we've really gotta digest and. Get it right. We just have to get it right. So the next item, discussion of storm shelters and city buildings.
Just wanna talk about this, uh, you know, I know in the past they've opened the. Underneath the stage for. Storm shelter, please open up, that's the city wanna continue that. I see pros and cons. What is, what happens if at two in the morning, police officer, they open it up? You know. Yeah. You know, I've been, and, and you know, I've been through it myself once. Um, I wasn't home, but I lost my house in it. But the point is, is, you know, I think we always have to encourage some people into public, you know, don't depend on this one here because you do have it. And ours is not handicap accessible. Generator on this building, even though the rest of town blew away, it wouldn't make a difference. But, um, but I think it's something to look at, you know, we can open it up and do it. Uh, we found out this way, we learned some lessons even with the snow thing. When we did the snow thing, um. We did. Okay. We did better when the bus broke down because at that point in time, the chief and I had talked about some of the issues. And we always had somebody in the building. Some authority in the building because that way you don't have problems. You know, I know in Jackson City, we have people in the building during the day, we would hear too, but then you have to infamous on stores, you have to infamous problems with pets. And people bring their big dogs in or little dogs in and they bark at little kids that are scared now and look at scream at it. Or they try to touch the dogs and get that. And I remember telling somebody in Jackson City that, no, you can't go down to reach dog. Well, that's my child. I'm going, then you're your child, I'll leave. I mean, you know, and you get real tough because. What's everybody else gonna do? And you have them down there. So I think it's things we need to think about, um. You know, talk staff a little bit. I mean, again, the problem I have is, is are we available to open? Because if we have one to offshoot at night. And, and maybe they should be doing something else, I don't know, in the building. So, you know, we're still gonna discuss it staff wise, but you know, unless you have some real, real things that you want here. But the, the point is, people need to decide, you know, and again, I'm not sure it was always a good idea that. In a storm for somebody driving across town a mile or half mile to a shelter. That you may have problems getting there too, you know.
Which building? Is it this building or the courthouse that used to be categorized as a bomb shelter? This one, so. I, I think if, is there certain days of the year, at least here, that you, you know when you're gonna have. Certain weather. So I, I think if they have time to plan for it.
Did.
Then, okay, do it. But like, yeah, I don't think we're gonna fault a police officer for a last minute twenty to come through and not making a trip here, so.
Just remember, poison tornadoes never, poison was never in a warning.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we just have as much liability for having meetings on a second story up here as we do. Worries about somebody in the path of an F-three or F-four tornado, so.
We'll move forward. Actually, we'll at least get a discussion commissioned so you can have counsel. So, yeah, I'm gonna, one day, one of these days, I'll get it right. But, uh. But anyhow, I think it's, it's just, you know, I wanted to just have a discussion so the public could hear it as well too, so. Um, keep things out in front of the public.
I don't think there's any other storm shelters in the community, is there?
Most towns will have. You know, the problem you have is, and I'll, I'll, I'll throw my poison tornado experience. The night, that night in Great Bend, in Great Bend. The old, um, the hospital was not open now, but in the hospital, they're all, everybody went in the basement of the hospital. So all of a sudden, when the poison tornado got hit. All the people, so they had to evacuate the hospital, because the hospital got hit too. So they evacuated people to, to poison, or Great Bend or Lard and everywhere else. All of a sudden, now you have thirty-seven injured people coming in from Hoysington to the hospital. And you have people that are there, you don't have staff to, you know, I mean, it was just a lot of issues. That was one thing that dropped back afterwards. Uh. You know, I say the same thing about, you know, and, and everything that I've, I love tornado foe. But I'm really not. I always say that even like storm sirens, yeah, we do have storm sirens, make sure they work. But you know, nowadays, everybody has one of these. Or a lot of people have one of these. And, and I think it's real important to know that, you know. Most of us will get a beep on the middle of the night on our phones. I mean, most of us have apps and everything else, a large part of the population do. And I think, you know, the one thing that, um, my, my youngest daughter Macy, who's now thirty. Uh, she was about seven, we had to try to get, and she was scared to go back to our house. And the Lutheran church is always gonna have Camp Noah, because Noah was the first national disaster in the Bible. And they had a little seminar on, um. A week long camp. And so last day, Dave Freeman from KSN was there. And Dave Freeman made a comment, says, the weather guy, his weather truck out there, he goes. How many are I security class? Every adult had to get up, you know, just lost their house three months earlier. And he goes, well, houses are good, they bring rain during the act, we need to open it. He says, when you think of class weird, it looks bad, go inside, turn to view, and I'll tell you what to do. And my daughter, I think she almost cried when he retired. Because when she was twenty-five years old, she still wanted to Dave Freeman to make sure that. You know, he says, I'll tell you what to worry about, so. Way to learn.
Hey, I'm sorry, um. It was, you guys were talking about this, and some of you said triggered, uh, idea of mine. This really, we should coordinate with the county emergency management first on this. That's, that's the first, okay, yeah. Because that's really, whatever we do here, they have to be included. So, yeah, that's maybe the lead on this.
Like I said, when we had the bus breakdown, uh, we did a better job. I mean, we learned from the lesson.
Yeah.
We had, we had a law enforcement there. And I was glad we did, it was on the bus. They were busting a lot of people from all over the country. And I think we were all, we all felt better. It's office staff did, but just in our immediate that you have law enforcement there. It's like when the snowstorm. Most of them are good, but why if you don't have that one, you know, versus there and, um. It's good to have law, we, we learned the lesson, everybody, you know. And when the bus broke down, we split between SO and the. And the PD both didn't work that well.
Yeah. Very good.
And listen, comment to Don, the Pines has a very nice storm shelter. So if you're all over by the Pines during a storm, come come in.
See, there's one too.
Yeah. Yeah. And it, it's on, it's on the level, you don't have to go in the basement or anything. It's a dedicated stormy space.
I think there's one out, I think there's one out there. Treader Park in here.
Yeah, I was saying that there was one there.
I don't think they put one in out there.
They buried in that.
Yeah.
Buried in the, you know, there.
Very good. Anything else on the storm shelters? Okay, so we're wrapping this up. Uh, Department heads, um, Delvin.
I have nothing.
Okay. Uh, I don't see Ralph, I don't see, um. Patrick or Blake, uh, I don't see Chief Penny. Um. No Ronnie, uh, no Troy, and no Dave. Boy, there's Dave. Dave, do you have anything?
Um. No, uh, just. Like you said, we got wells that need to be fixed, but we ain't got the money to fix them. Where he says, we're not gonna have. You know, it's just. We're gonna be working all around, it's just. Maintain it. Get the. Same amount of water.
Okay, anything else, David? Okay. All right, um. City attorney, Patrick, did you have anything?
I can't think of anything.
Okay, um, city clerk, man. You're playing games here, I think we're going to. City. Yeah, well, maybe.
Just, um, Chief Penny is gone, his mother-in-law passed away, so.
Okay.
Um. I don't know if it lives in Texas or the red, but I'm Texas, so it's free for everybody. So. All right, then I spoke to you much tonight. Again, we have a lot of things happening, um. And a lot of things we gotta get our handle on, I think we will. Um, and again, when we look at the rates, you know, don't blame anybody in the past, it's, you know. I, I think there's certainly has come with my experience that I have had because I've seen a lot and dealt with a lot of rates and how to get there financially. So. Um, you know, Angela will tell you, and we gather, asking Angela. Ten thousand questions and, and she gives me answers. I go, why do we do it this way? And she'll tell me, and I go, well, you know. We maybe include a better way to do it, and I think we, we start doing it. And I always say to staff, and I told Angela today, I said. We wanna make it so if you don't show up to work tomorrow. That if somebody else walks in, they could understand what you do. And not that it hasn't worked, but it's, it's, it's those things that are a little more standard, so. And we're making some minor changes, but everybody's great, you know, we're, we're making this, yeah, so, good deal.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on to city council. Tyler, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
All right, President of the Council, Coach, do you have anything?
No.
All right, Aaron, do you have anything?
No.
All right, Counselor Panzer, do you have anything?
Just real short, have we any discussion with the Fairborn Jets?
They were good. They were on spring break, so we have.
Yeah, okay. And then, um. Up in our commercial part of town where we got Ampride Casey's, the, the tractor supply, the banks. Uh. The. Casey's is probably the worst. There's cups, paper plates, paper sacks. It's just completely. Flittered up there. And can we kind of notify the people they might wanna clean that up a little bit?
Steve notified them last week and he's gonna give them that paint, ten days and he's gonna send them on.
Okay.
Notice.
Okay, cause it was brought to my attention, so I drove by.
They, 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 they do a less than good job on emptying your trash cans through the day. Okay. Cause I've been up there, it's just coming out. Yeah, people are putting it in there, but.
It's blowing off. Yeah, we've had some strong winds, but to their defense, but it, it looks pretty bad. Okay. That's all I have.
All right, Counselor Hansen, do you have anything? Okay, uh, Mayor Collins, I have a few comments tonight. So a couple meetings ago, I was telling you, I went to that Kansas Farm Bureau leadership. Um, got to meet the governor and I got to ask her my question. So, um, I asked her who she hangs out with on the other side of the aisle. And she loved the question. She said Senator Moran, he's been really good to her. She talked about their coordination during the pandemic. How hard that was for this, each state was kind of on their own a lot, you know, everybody's kind of feeling their way through it. And he kind of came through for her. So she mentioned him and one thing that struck me that she mentioned was that when she first. Got involved in politics, she realized. Hey, there are ten Democrats and forty Republicans. I had better start making friends quickly. And she did, she just reached out and started making friends. So that was a good answer. I, I enjoyed that. I thought she was really sharp and. Very present. And one thing I found interesting is that she did work in Salina for a year, then they moved to Topeka. Um, so she spent most of her career, career in Topeka. And the reason she got into politics is ended up living in neighborhoods where there were politicians. And so just by being with them, you know, she just got introduced to it and got involved in it. So. She's not gonna run again. Her big push is gonna be water. The next two years and just kind of coordinate the different state agencies to where. She's not gonna solve the problem, but she's gonna kind of move us a lot further towards the day when we can be in better shape. So it was, it was a good meeting. Uh, another subject, Rhythm and Reels is having a. Regular business meeting this Thursday at six PM at the library. The public is welcome to come. Um. Can ask any question you'd like to ask. Uh, it'll just be, the committee will be there, uh, but if you'd like to talk about. You know, how they came up with the name or, or why the theme changed or anything like that, you're more than welcome to come. So. Six o'clock this Thursday at the library. Um, I got pulled aside, another subject, by Grohl Ellsworth County. So we had a. Couple meetings ago, we had someone approach us about an executive session. They pulled me aside about a week later and said, let me tell you what's happening here. Everything's fine. They're, they're trying to hire a new director. Uh, whatever tasks that are going on are being handled by their board. They have a fifteen person board. So they have plenty of people running the show until they. Find somebody, they interview people, they got people who are interested in Ellsworth. Should not be a problem, but there were rumors being spread all over the place about this and that. And so they wanted to dispel those rumors. So. It's pretty much just the normal hiring process, the same type we'll go through. Um, so that was nice and then to clear that up. So gave you a lot of confidence. Um. And I think that's it. I mean, I don't think I have anything else. If, if I do have something, it can wait till the next time. So. With that said, um, if I could make a motion to adjourn, we can.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All set. Yeah, all right, Senator, the council coach has made a motion to adjourn the meeting. And Councilor Panzer has seconded that motion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion is, motion carries, we are adjourned.
I think, you know, that's been up since when it's nice that's asked.
Yeah, shortly.